Thank you.
Thank you, baby. Oh, oh, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
So. I only printed the general fund expenditures. I don't have any, I haven't done anything with Seward yet and the revenue is still. I have some questions. So, but I figured this would be plenty for us to.
It's beginning, it's good.
What's that?
It's the beginning, it's good.
So I'm not sure how you guys wanna do this. Do you wanna just look at it and shoot questions out or?
Yeah.
Okay.
No. Who may or may not.
Noel, Noel.
Right?
Noel.
Noel.
I didn't move you over.
Oh, he did the moving last week.
I did. Did you proud him?
I was.
So the numbers on the far right column are projected budget. The, the yellow highlighted ones are the ones that I feel pretty comfortable with.
Oh, okay.
The ones that are green on the left column, those are the numbers that Jake gave me.
Oh, down here, okay.
Green column is Jake.
The green is Jake, yep. He and I haven't talked about those numbers.
You match your column.
I do, that's my word.
You just touched solidarity in my column.
Well, let's start out with buildings, village hall equipment. Projected budget two hundred and eighty thousand.
Projected budget two eighty.
I think we can talk about that one.
Jake, there's a grant that should cover about two fifteen of that, you were saying?
Yeah, yeah, this, the, that includes because we don't have a line for the well decommissioning. It was a reimbursement grant, but we have to show the expense and then there'll be a revenue line on the other side. The revenue line should be about two fifteen-ish. We're still working that out exactly. Should be around between eleven and fifteen grand.
On the next day.
Yeah, five percent.
So it'll be around, it'll be.
Like sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Yeah, that's estimated at two, at two thirty, so the other I've got in there is the, I just wanna, it's the, then plus the roof. And we're looking at trying to get, either get money in there. Well, the carpet would be in that same line, it's a capital thing, so at least if we have that in, I guess, with the carpet too, if that's in there. A big carpet, now we put some towards the roof up here and we put, and this wasn't a prop, just to make sure that you guys approved it.
Look at the floor, look at the floor.
I know, I understand.
Well, um, but.
So the plan is to replace the carpet with the carpet?
I'm not sure what the.
I don't know, I like carpet.
Yeah, does that make sense to replace the carpet?
I think I got Jake on board with replacing it with the squares that you can remove them.
Yep.
Because they wouldn't get a lot of sun or anything and it wouldn't, and most of it's covered, so if you do get one spot and you have to replace one.
Yeah, I suggest the tile, the carpet tiles for sure.
Could really.
Oh, yeah.
Carpet tiles, yeah.
Yeah.
But if you get, if you go with something else, the acoustics are, are gonna be worse than they are now.
Oh, yeah.
I, I wonder, you know, with the, obviously there's carpet, the tile, the squares are the better thing, I guess, but I wonder if we have, if any of the colleges around here are teaching something with acoustics or sound and.
We need to do something.
They hang panels and.
Yeah, you can hang.
Some things.
I mean, Pub 235 is something, if you have panels and stuff to, to kinda, I mean, you don't wanna absorb the sound, and maybe you do, maybe because it's the way the sound travels in there, you gotta somehow focus it or redefine. I don't know how it all works, but it'd be nice to have maybe a, a kid, one of the college students look at it and study and say, hey, where are we gonna put things? And then we wouldn't have that extra cost associated when, you know, kind of he gets to experience, he or she would get experience and stuff and we could, then just get the material.
Um, Adam's working on, he thinks it might be a simple fix with our Facebook if we just gotta have a more high-powered microphone, so we can look at both of them.
Yeah, he was gonna look at a couple of things when I talked to him to try to figure out, because, I mean, everybody that I talked to just complained.
But.
And I don't know, a lot of it is because we're not using what we have correctly.
We do need to, you need to talk into the microphones, but also in addition to that, when we first bought, we were just going cheap, because we were like, let's just try this out, see if this'll work.
Yeah.
We went pretty cheap with the webcam, and that's the only microphone that's, that is worth using to pick up the feed, so.
He was thinking about asking, yeah, he asked me to call Karen Buck and see what she used, and I thought, I'm sure Karen isn't gonna tell me.
There's an output on the system in the back, there's an output, you can plug that in, but I don't know if that's compatible with that mic or that, or that camera.
No, I, I know, I, I asked you to just see like if there was a cord that, what she did, if she would share that with you, just so we can, just so we know. She, 'cause Joe had told me she went right into the sound system.
I don't know if we had enough mics. My barber told me the other day, like, he goes, you're the only one I could ever hear on there, and that's 'cause I literally, I put the mic here and I, when I speak, it's beginning of the mic, but if everyone has a.
Wait a minute, but you and I have deeper voices than a lot, and that makes a difference too, whether they can.
True, but.
Can they hear me?
Huh?
Smoker voice, is it?
No.
Not really well, I said, you're the only one that, that, they said I was the only one that could hear, but I literally, I put it right here, I'm no joke, and I, when I speak, I speak into it, so that's why, but.
Well, we could get smaller tables.
No, we need a proper sound system.
I'm trying to get Al farther away from me.
You need to sit back a little bit sometimes and you just have to talk very into it, but that, and, 'cause you don't think of that kinda microphone as being the one you need to be, you have to be like right here.
Yeah.
All right, let's just do that and see how it works, or, or we spend my money.
Well, we still need a new microphone.
We still need it, it's.
For to talk to the webcam.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if the webcams, I mean, this isn't a budget thing, I guess, maybe it is, but if the webcam's focused straight ahead or, you know, if they turn and watch whoever is there, the microphone's probably just picking up right in front of it, that could be tied into the system that's picking up all the individual mics.
There.
That'd be the, I would think a win, rather than having the microphone trying to pick up what's in the air, and the micro, that input coming from the system in the back that's clapping all the microphones.
I just have a feeling.
Or with a microphone up next to the speaker.
What we got set up, it probably is not gonna be able to hook into a laptop that the webcam's into, but I think we should look at all avenues, but I really think that, um, more high-powered microphone that's right there in front of you guys would should be able to pick up, especially if you're talking into the microphones.
I wouldn't, um, we'd get one of those things like on the sidelines of the NFL game, I'd be that guy.
A satellite dish?
No, one of those, a parabolic microphone.
A little thing on wheels.
Those white things that they use at the football games, yeah.
The horns that you bug, that they use at football games in the nineteen twenties?
Yeah. One of the things that you're talking to.
Cheerleaders.
Yeah.
All right.
Why don't we budget gas at thirty-six hundred? We only have spent thirteen hundred compared to the six and seven thousand that worked before. Are we more efficient this year or what?
I don't know when the, uh.
Sixteen twenty.
I don't know where we are.
Sixteen twenty-four eleven.
Yeah, no, I don't know where we are with the bills. I don't know what our latest bill that we paid is, obviously we're into the cooling season now is when we use, or the heating season.
Yeah.
When we use more gas, but I don't know if we're current as of December or January.
We just paid one, so we're paying through December.
Yeah, so we've only really got a couple months of gas.
Paid through December.
Yeah.
Is it quarter? No.
No.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we had, uh, gas and electric in the last bill paid.
So it's probably you're just getting or just got or getting, should get to January once, depending on when they read.
Yeah. Usually a few weeks out.
Same thing true with electric?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's about the same. So those would be.
Well, I know I was reading one, one thirty-one off of something, and so I'm thinking four months left and we're at seventy-four, pretty low, but if this only goes through December. Would be different.
January, February, yeah. Well, if we're seventy-four ninety-nine for electric, seven months into the year, then that fifteen is pretty, pretty right on.
Well, if you double it, that's, double it, that's fifteen, but if we're in seven months, you only have a five month, but. Just, just saying.
Yeah, but we're.
Couple months.
Spending more now than we will in April, May.
Okay.
Yeah, wouldn't we like that?
Refuse disposal. I have a problem with that. Historically, we're not over a thousand. We're certainly, doesn't look like we're gonna be over a thousand this year, but she asked for twenty-eight hundred.
So the carpet.
We have to dispose of the carpet. No, I have, uh, I had a question on this one.
Oh, right, right. Is, is your twenty-eight hundred gross?
That's, I wasn't sure how that was in, and why it was in there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we pay for all of it and then we get reimbursed for a portion of it through an agreement with NOCO and the apartments and Golden Boys.
That's right.
But if we pay for it all at one, and we pay for it all, I don't know how it's, if there's a revenue line or if that revenue can go against the expense line to lower it.
Yeah, the revenue offsets this expense.
Okay, so we don't have to have a revenue and an expense line?
Right.
Okay.
So just write your revenue.
So it's not gonna be twenty-eight hundred, it'll be more like, it'll be more along the lines of historical.
Revenue offsets.
Eight fifty-ish.
Around eight fifty-ish?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We were able to save a little bit on the payroll processing because of the switch that we just made.
How about engineering professional services?
What number are you?
Four up from about sixteen twenty-four sixty.
That's a new line, and that's if we have to do anything down with the, uh, with the sandbar wells.
Wells, yeah, that's what I found.
So there's not a, it's, period, those are, at this point, they're buildings that we have, there's not a, you know, obviously there's no water lines, we have to park those, that project and those assets somewhere, so we've been kinda doing a lot of buildings with it, are getting mills that we have still there and stuff, so.
It makes more sense to split up.
Is, uh, Mayor gonna buy back those buildings or what's the?
We're not sure yet, that's had to be an agreement or discussion, or they came, the property, the property came out of there, and the buildings, when we did the grant, um, stuff we have, we looked at it two different ways and it was really a wash, whether we decommission the wells and leave the buildings, or if you demolish the buildings and decommission the wells, you save on the decommissioning of wells because the buildings aren't in the way, but then you have to pay to demolish the building, so it's kind of.
It's a new watch.
Young, future discussion to see what the, I guess, what the preference is and, and what's better, and that's one thing we also have to check with the, with the engineer, when we did the submittals, it was about, um, I'd say seven grand or so with the testing and the, and disposal costs. For those buildings, the buildings aren't big, they're probably fifteen by fifteen, fifteen by seventeen, but buildings, not a huge way, you'd have to check for, you know, asbestos and things like that and do any remediation, and part of the testing, I got a quote for the testing, it was forty-eight hundred dollars, so that means disposal is a couple grand. I don't know if they're assuming there's some asbestos in their ACM, they just call asbestos containment area under. Then forget the testing, treat it all like it's asbestos containment and just dispose of it, 'cause, you know, treat it all as if it is, does, and, and spend that forty-eight hundred, I think, that's why I'm gonna get more, more information on the numbers, but I'd rather spend the forty-eight hundred on disposal costs, we're gonna have to dispose of it like that anyway. I might pay to test something that you're, might be or might not be, and, you know, at each, the time those things are built, it's.
I know, and you talked about that a good year ago, year and a half ago.
Yeah, the roofing may, may have, you know, non-friable in the, in the roofing material, but again, if you, if that's the only spot where there's what they call P-A-C-M, or you would suspect, presume asbestos containment material, you're better off just disposing of it, or, you know, treating it as if it was and then disposing of it that way, I think, and especially when the testing's more than the disposal cost.
So Jake, is it, so our two options are to just decommission the wells and then leave it, or to demolish and what?
Yeah, demolish the buildings. I mean, the wells obviously are under, in, within the building and they're under, um, so the ones that have, or if there's five in the building, there's three outside of the building, these rock wells, the observation wells, or rock wells there, excuse me, and, yeah, that's basically the option, so I would think that part of the discussion with whoever may want it in the future, might be the, the desired condition, because if it's a wash either way, you know, and so, it's a wash either way, maybe you'd try to set it up so it's more desirable and less desirable, and then we know that, you know, it's taken care of properly as part of the decommissioning process, if the building, say, if it was, uh, more beneficial or more, uh, if it were right now, but if it was preference, if the preference was to have the buildings gone, you know, it makes sense to look at, you know, because.
And he was talking about more parking stuff too, so I remember that.
There's a clock.
Yeah.
Didn't he say, did Meyer say that he would tear the buildings down? Remember that when they were sitting right there?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's all, and they were also, you know, discussing, you know, decommissioning the wells, but.
But he doesn't understand.
There's, you know, there's a, yes, three hundred, three hundred foot deep wells, you can't do that with a backhoe and, you know.
No, but it's still. Exactly.
When, uh, those wells are capped off, just from my own information, are they down the ground level and have a manhole cover over them or something?
No, they're.
Or is it just completely disappeared?
There's, yeah, there's a, there's a standard, not how to do it in AW, but it's a standard, and they're basically decommissioned, they're cut off, I think with, they're within a building, that's, there's a difference too, if they're within a building, it's gotta be a foot below the ground at the floor level, and I think if they're outside of a building, they gotta be like five feet down, five or six feet down when they're capped, but they're filled, you know, they're.
Yeah, there's a plug in there, right?
Well, the screen intervals are filled with gravel and then, you know, depending on clay going all the way up, and then there's capped at the top, they're dug down, excavated around and cut and capped, welded on and sealed, and then I think there's a cap even on top of that, and then there's fill on top of it.
So is it possible that somebody might want those buildings? That it might be more scalable with the buildings?
The, 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 only, we only have, the buildings are kinda landlocked, near easement, and ingress, ingress, and if that's not about them, ingress, ingress easement for, for the buildings is because they're part of a water supply system, I don't know how, I'd have to look and see how the easements were written, I guess, or have downloaded.
If the easement goes along with the sale?
If, typically an easement would stay with the property unless it's specific, it's almost like a license rather than an easement where it's specific to the purpose that you're using it for.
Okay.
And if it ceases to be, you know, a water supply, does that easement extinguish, um, or do, or do they not have ingress, egress anymore, and the property that those, uh, wells are on is just the building, they're, they're landlocked, there's, you know, fifteen, maybe it's, basically the footprint of the building is the property that the village owns in each spot, so.
Right.
There's not a, you know, we don't have road frontage, there's not access to it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, really, they're very specific to that area and those lots.
I'm just asking because, um, if we're gonna have to demolish those buildings sooner or later anyway, and I just won't do it, and rather than have to sit there and get ugly and old.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I guess, make sure that if someone, if it's more desirable to the, I guess, the logical purchaser of them, um, if it's more desirable that the buildings are there for storage, I mean, so, okay, we'll leave a building for storage, or maybe, if I have them, maybe two of them, they would say, oh, can we leave these guys and we'll demolish these other guys, and.
Okay.
Say if it's a wash either way, um, but if there's, obviously if there's cost implications, then whatever's beneficial to the village will do that, and then, um, then someone else who may have, who probably wanted it, if, you know, the cost of village more, unless we're reimbursed for that extra cost, I would say, you know, let somebody else do it how they want it.
Okay.
Why is there a big, um, safety inspection personnel? Year to date, just thirty-eight for.
Thirty-six twenty-one hundred?
Yeah.
That's Will's salary.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. All the one hundreds are people's pay.
Just in the middle of the room. All right.
Yes.
Make it ninety-seven.
Yeah, exactly.
Will makes ninety-seven?
What did you say, Carl?
Will, it's Will's salary, I see that.
Yeah.
We have a lot going on on road repairs?
It's, yeah, we're trying to, trying to keep that going, um, you know, there's, Marcia's asked us for a gutter vest, and this is the best, um, plan for road repairs, trying, you know, we obviously find that the more you put in the maintenance, the less we're putting in the repairs, you know, you said a dollar, dollar now is saving you five dollars down the road, so excuse the pun. Oh, what?
I got it.
All right, um, so that's what we're, we're trying to do, obviously that's, you know, we're gonna have constraints to the budget or what we can, what we can do, but that's our, this is the wish list, you know, um, and that's, that includes, um, doing, continuing with the gutter replacement stuff we're doing, um, on Clover Street, you know, doing the gutters on both sides of Clover and Millen Bay. Clover, then Millen Bay, then Curture, and Apple Line Drive, Reynolds Road, there's a spot that we, we stopped short when they were doing work with the, with the state was doing work there, so we get to do, you know, in front of Dunkin' Donuts, just up to Dean's Spring about, the little section there, and obviously those, I mean, the milling machine's forty-five hundred bucks a day, so we wanna, we're using it for a whole day. That little section in front of Dunkin' Donuts isn't taking us a whole day, so we do that in conjunction with Clover Street, or we do it in conjunction with someone else, that's where we kinda get our groups, like Reynolds and Clover would be together, and then Curture and Lions, I mean, they're, they're so close, so we do those at the same time, and we'd have the milling machine one day, and then the paver's about twenty-five hundred bucks, um, all together.
Well, part of that be part of the CDBG, part of that?
Creepy BB, no, creepy BB is sidewalks, uh, CHIPS is that, so some of this is offset with CHIPS funding, but CHIPS, um, you see on the revenue side, I think we put in eighty-five.
Yeah.
Um, because with the last couple of years, we've gotten about ninety-six, ninety-seven for, but that was CHIPS, EWR, which is Extreme Winter Recovery, and then Pave New York, the three different programs, CHIPS is about sixty-eight hundred, Pave New York was, uh.
Thousand.
No, Pave New York was fifteen, and EWR was twelve thousand, so fifteen thousand, twelve thousand, so we ended up with about ninety-seven, ninety-six, ninety-seven for those three programs together, but, you know, never know what they're gonna do in fact, you know, the next week or so, there's a bunch of, I'm not going this year, um, but a bunch of them are going to Albany for advocacy day, unless I can swing just going there that morning, but I'd have to leave like two o'clock in the morning to get there, so I don't know if they wanna do that. Um, but they're doing advocacy day where they go and they visit, um, all the local legislators, um, on the, in the assembly in the senate and explain, you know, if it's the orange that Road Local Roads Matters shirt, so we have, they use a big sea of orange that you see up at the Capitol. And every year they've been doing it to try to push and keep this CHIPS funding and, um, and, you know, in the recent years, these two other programs, the Pave New York and the, and the, um, EWR. Oh, yeah, yeah, well, hopefully they'll still be there to vote for the budget though, I guess, and push that, so. So, hopefully we can, hopefully the, the last couple of years have been, you know, successful in the stuff that's maintained, it hasn't seen a lot of increase, but it's been maintained, so, um, you know, they're important, you could say seventy percent of the rural, New York State of local rural, so it's important to give that money there for them. But no, that's a long answer to your short question, that's not, or CDBG, that's sidewalks.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Andy has to pick up today.
Oh, I missed the question. Is there coffee? No, no, I'm good, oh, good, good and bad.
I have a concern with the Halloween amounts for candy. Going hand out so much. Did you see it this year? It was amazing.
It should be, it should be improved because, uh.
It was.
Huh?
Went through it all, too.
Yes, we said all that.
Okay, we go through it all every year.
I sent your own diet.
One way or the other.
I might be offered by that, and all that's not available.
I offered him pizza, he turned it down.
Wow, impressive, Jake.
Nothing for historic personnel?
Oh, I wanted to, we're changing, we're taking, uh, the planning and zoning boards, the historian, the band, um, I think that's it, we're taking all those people off payroll and we're gonna just pay them a stipend. So they won't get a W-2 anymore, they'll still get the same pay and everything, but it's moving from.
Oh.
The, the one hundred account, which is just payrolls, to, um, the contractual line.
Oh.
Which now we won't be forced to pay for, pay into retirement, interstate retirement, or people who are only working here like.
Yeah.
Couple times a year, and in addition to that, um, I found out that there's less things we're required to provide in terms of medical if we have less employees, and there's, most places, most places don't put planning and zoning boards on payroll.
And they get, what, ten ninety-nine something like that?
Yes. Yeah.
So who is adding to the brand?
That is.
The historian, yeah.
Every day then.
The, um, six, I think, I think it's six, planning and zoning numbers, is there one in six now? Or less than six, I can't think. I believe it's around six.
I know.
One.
Planning, zoning.
And, um, all of the village band.
And the band.
That, which would be Tom, Indiana, and.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's the line now.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Jake, there are a couple of things I have a question here, back on page two thousand and five, one, one, two, four, two, six. Eight grand compared to, well, the highest we've spent over the last couple of years, the year, is five thousand, so what's the signs and posts?
Glad you brought that up, because I heard of, um, my meeting I met with, uh, Peter from the historic preservation the other day, and one of the discussions is talking about changing, um, the street signs in the village, at least starting in the courts on the main streets, to a, we'd have to look at the MUTCD and try to route through what we can, what we can add and what we can change, and make specific ones to historic core, or to identify, you know, a village or an area, uh, there's the federal standards and there's a state supplement to that, and then there's, you're looking at other communities, and that's why historic reservations are on, on it, because there's other communities that have ones, some look like you can find, or they necessarily meet the standards of what the MUTCD is. Of course, supposedly they're supposed to meet the standards, but they can be, still be unique for a historic area or, uh, a, like I said, if you wanna make the whole, all the village ones different, you could, you could apply it and they. like I said, if you wanted to make the whole, all the village ones different, you could, you could apply it, and they, or have with it kind of preset, ones, you can make them all pink if we wanted to, or you can make them all light blue, or brown, or green, or some different color than what the standard is, like, um, so that's one of the things we're working on, and that reflects some additional ones to change some of the signs, especially going down Main Street area, and catch up with some of the MUTCD requirements, we also have, we're looking at upgrading the, or replacing these stop signs and things, especially going out to some of the main streets, some of the bigger intersections, so those are required to be changed, based on the retro reflectivity, um.
Really?
Yes, yeah, that new, it's not really that new anymore, but there's.
And they're not applying anything there?
No, there's, this is a, this is standard, it's a, MUTCD, they call it manual on uniform traffic control devices, and that's how, now you drive down the side, the highway now, and the signs are so reflective and so bright when it's raining, you can't read the sign.
There you go, I need to keep all those standards straight.
That's the new standard, is, you know, is retro, it's, it's amazing to read it, how you're supposed to test, if you go out and get a, a retro reflectivity meter to see how much light's bouncing back, um.
Or I love the fact that they're putting all these new standards out there, it's not really, for the.
Yeah, no, what they did when they came down Main Street, the state came down, the main, you know, uh, two fifty and four oh four, changed a lot of the signs that were within their right of way there, so now if we can go back through and start filling, okay, here's the signs, and some of that's going around, getting the information out of the signs, seeing what it is, and we definitely should have, start to build a stand somewhere, like at the, at the SDP, or at the old Wellfields, or somewhere where we can have a sign, a post with signs in different direction, and we can then go out and measure that sign, and say, okay, this one went up in twenty twenty, measure it over here, okay, here's what it is, and then once that becomes noncompliant, all of them that were put in that time, that are facing the same direction, you go through and change. So, they'll be so bright that you can't read them, just like all the rest of them.
Still have all the old signs?
Yeah.
Go back.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah.
So Jake, that eight thousand.
The black and white ones, those street signs.
Yeah.
That eight thousand includes some
Some of that.
of the retro reflectivity conforming to standards, and some, like, upgrading to.
That includes us, yeah, start to see.
Fancy, like, sort of village.
Yeah.
The, what, the street signs?
Yeah, and we could all use that much time on it, in, in one or the other, I guarantee you, looking at the cost of the signs, we can go through and, and spend that, so it's like someone as far as we possibly can with what we have. I don't know, we haven't determined what the village ones, the, the unique street signs would be, uh, you know, it'd be nice, Carl's on the, made a, you know, white signs with the black letters, I don't think those are compliant.
They're historic.
Unless we can get something on that, um, but they'd have to be a certain design, but still have that retro reflectivity, and it's funny, you read this standard and how you can measure them, you can, it actually says in there, you have to get a, a male sixty years old or older, that's one way to test him driving around in a mid-sized vehicle, not a tall pickup truck, and not a real small one, a mid-sized vehicle, after a certain number of, level of darkness, and be able to see and mark down and measure, alright, now I can read the sign from this distance, and you mark it down and tell if it's.
Judy could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, you can hear a little bit.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's what we're looking to start doing, some of those replacements.
The state of New York doesn't even mark their signs properly.
I know.
So Jake, uh, fifty one forty two two hundred, or whatever, we're purchasing something, they just don't remember what.
That's a snow line, snow equipment contractual.
Loader.
Two hundred, that far.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's loader.
I remember you saying.
That's what we're, we're, we're gonna do it this year, um, and the one option we can, we, we're still trying to sort that out, so that could go down. We're still trying to sort it out, get numbers, to see what the best way to do it, is our loaders getting, getting kinda tired, um, and what we typically use is like five months out of the year, so we're looking at, you can rent one, that's like forty five hundred bucks a month for those five months, so if we do that, you know, twenty, twenty four grand, we do a lease option, where it's like a lease purchasing, where you can pay thirty grand a year, they don't have to, not re-roll over and get a new one, but then at the end of five years, thirty or something, you can, you end up owning a piece of equipment, um, then you've kinda softened the blow on, on the lease or on the purchase of it, and, you know, they're a hundred and sixty five dollars.
Yeah.
Typically, like I said, we only use it in the winter, um, we can get a new one every year, if we, we used to think, I don't say we only use it in the winter, we typically use it, we need it in the winter. Um, if we, projects, we can rent one for a week, or rent one for a month or something for a project, to be able to do what we needed to do with it, um, you know, obviously that's cost, or if we have to get a, you know, a week, a month might be thirty five hundred bucks, a week might be, you know, in the middle of, uh, the summer construction season, might be twenty five hundred dollars for a week, or you get a, you know, uh, more, so, we're still weighing those out, but I wanted to put some number in there.
I just couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, it's a loader, uh, again, we're, and Marcia and I were talking about the, the pluses and minuses, I think, to both, both ways of approaching both ways of doing it. You have an asset at the end of the day, if you buy it, but you, you get all the liabilities of that asset, and that lease, that, here's a new one every year, you're constantly paying for it, five years, you don't stop.
Just like we do with our own trucks, Jake.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, yeah, there's, please, there's pluses and minuses, and one thing is, we don't use a lot of hours, you know, I mean, we could, we had a terrible, if we had a terrible, God, now I got the coronavirus. If we got the, uh, if we got the, um, the Vax virus, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Wine flu.
Wine flu. If we get the, uh, if we get a bad winter, we're gonna put a lot of hours on something, but, you know, typically we don't, so it's like,
Right.
like our leases, like you said, on their trucks, we don't drive them a lot, we're paying for all that time we're not using, so is that beneficial? Right, and you gotta have it here one way or another, so.
So you and I need to do a more comprehensive cost analysis then?
Yeah, I guess, I think we've gotta, you know, figure out exactly what all the numbers are, we've got those preliminary ones, um, but figure out what other options there are, and just think that state, yeah, see what it, what.
Okay.
Cost of it, uh, two, three, four, five.
Before we get off that page.
If we were to look at that and see.
It is five, one, one, two, forty, it's four twenty five, major road repairs. Three hundred and seventy eight thousand, from two sixty six to two ninety, this year, two twenty one sixty four. That's a huge jump, I think we made a change last year to three hundred thousand. So why are we, three seventy eight, nine, one, one.
Cause that's, that's what I was talking about before, when I said Marcia wanted the good, better, best. Um, thing, so this is the, this is what we like to do, um, and then we also, you know, prepared a, this was, again, that was Clover doing the gutters, and Mill and Babe on Clover, um, and there's a potential doing storm lines, I'm still getting the numbers, uh, to see there, but that's about ninety grand, um, ninety five. Uh, Curture and Lyons, uh, both, those, Curture and half of Lyons, about forty eight grand, now Reynolds Road, it's about ten grand, if you're doing that with, you know, Mill and Babe with a, with another road, ten grand just for the asphalt, um, then we've got, you know, preservation things, and, and this is where we really extended dollars. It's about eighteen grand in tack, air crack filling, uh, micro paving, about a hundred and sixty thousand, and I think there was nine roads that we had on the list, and then fifty grand in patching, that came out to three seventy eight, um, we've got the, you know, this is what we wanna do, we've got what we should do, and then what we have to do. Um, the should do one, we eliminate Lion Drive off of it, um, we eliminate, um, some of the, a couple of the micro paved ones are a little higher dollar, and reduce the patching, that gets it down like three oh six, and the gotta do ones, um, we eliminate Curture and Lion, eliminate four of the micro paved roads, increase the patching a little bit, cause if we pave less, we're gonna have to patch more, um, and that gets about two sixty one, so, that's, you know, where we're, where we're looking at, uh.
Personally, I like the little, the middle one. It's, it's going up, and it cannot continue to go up.
Well, the more, and the more you don't ignore some of this stuff, I assure you, I assure you it's gonna go up.
I understand, yeah, but, um.
So if you have a stronger year, then the following year you can back down a little bit, you gotta be able to.
Right.
Oh, I like your middle one, your middle one is not a wish list, it's, it's not also the bare minimum.
Right, yeah, no, and that's, I, that's why we, and I like, you know, this kind of approach to it, just because, I, I like what you have to put down, here's what we wanna do, here's what we should do, here's what we have to, here's a bare minimum, you'd like to do a little more than the minimum, cause anything we can add to the preservation, and you, you know, the most important line is the crack filling, the micro.
Crack filling is huge.
And, and, you know, every dollar we, you know, we spend on there saves, you know, so we're spending eighteen grand, we're saving a hundred thousand on repairs. Um, but you don't see those, you don't harvest that right away, it's way down the road, or ideally, you're never gonna really see, you're gonna see slowly that this number's, you know, I wanna say, I wanna say it's gonna go down, but the, the reality is, this number's gonna go down, but the materials and everything else, and labor and all that's gonna go up, so you probably won't see, it just won't go up as much as it would've gone up, you know, hopefully, we can get it to go down where we're just doing crack filling and micro paving, doing maintenance things and not.
I got leaders that struggle in my organization, when I try to talk to them about this, you know, no, like, you know, the, I, I, so I'll skip the crack filling and, next spring, I gotta do a lot for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, because the freeze and thaw, and freeze and thaw, damage, damage, no part of it.
Because you did not come and fill in those holes.
So it's important.
Yeah, and some, some of this is the odds for it.
What holes on your street?
Yeah, caused by the kid across the street leaking gas, holes.
Swartz club?
Well, that would show favoritism, if you went to do it right away, then at least wait a year.
It was at least a year, three years, however, anyways, um, that's where I am, I like the middle.
Drop them off a bag of cold pitch. Now Jake's gonna go and put a speed bump right there. Probably so much asphalt in that, so.
It needs it. Yeah, there are times.
So Jake, for, um, fifty four ten, two hundred?
That's what I was looking at.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
We've got one oh five K CDBG, is that what we're requesting, or is that?
Oh, fifty four, I'm looking at fifty one forty, I'm, I don't see it.
Fifty four ten two hundred.
Yeah, fifty four ten two hundred is capital, that's, um, one seventy two, so that's the, actually.
West Main Street.
Did I, short, no, I've got it more later on, um, fifty four ten, it's one seventy two, that's West Main Street, both sides, I'm still looking for it, here, West Main Street, both sides, and the ask for the Community Development and Block grant, you know, looking at the last number of years, what we've requested, and what we've gotten, it's always lower than what we, what we request, um, but we've gotten more and more, um, you know, we used to get twenty five grand a year, last year we got eighty seven thousand, so. We've been more successful in our, what we've been getting, but it's always seems to be lowering what we ask, if we're looking at the numbers, seems like it's about sixty percent. So, we can ask for sixty percent to see if we can get exactly what we asked for this year, um, so it's a hundred and seventy two is the total project cost, and we asked for one oh five. Um, hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna get that to be the most we ever got, um, that would allow us to do both sides of, uh, north and south side of West Main Street, and kind of continue, those weather and that, and that group, this year, we're doing east Main Street, the north side of East Main Street, so, and then, the south side of East Main Street isn't in the low mod area, it's not eligible for CDBG funds right now, um, and we can look at, see if it comes back in next year, you know, or the following year, or, um, just try to budget for that at some point where we can put that, um, and your CDBG funds offset something else, or whatever.
So that one seventy two may go down, depending upon what.
Right, yeah, I mean, if they say, hey, you're getting eighty thousand dollars, okay, well, then we're not gonna be able to do all of the projects, so we're gonna look at doing, um, what we can, you know, making that stretch it out as far as we can.
Marcia, do you know what the, to date, is out of that hundred and forty thousand?
Zero, cause we're doing it, um, this, you know, April, May, depending on the weather, we find out about it in October, and we don't have enough time in October, or September, October to, to do them before the winter times, we do them in the spring, we try to get it done before, we try to get it done before they're deciding on what we can do, you know, when they're reviewing our last year's projects, cause if it's all spent, they're pretty happy with us, and they wanna, give us more money to use.
There you go.
End up with this year's budget.
Jake, does that, uh, road salt number fifty one forty two four thirty, um, does that include what you were telling me about, um, stocking up at the end of this season for next winter?
Well, this would be, um, right now, we're at, we're at, um, about seventy five percent of our allocation, or eighty, we just got another couple loads.
Okay.
Yeah.
Basically, you know, in class, you had a great point a couple of years ago, we were discussing our road salt, we have to tell them what we want in like April, April, May, um, we gotta tell them what we want the next year, cause they go and put out a contract, or the state does, you buy it through the state, um, historically, we've used like three hundred tonner, we've said we wanted three hundred ton, first year I was here, we just looked at it, the first year I was here, I think we used, we had two hundred ton, we had the minimum each time, the following year was four hundred and ninety ton we needed, and the following year after that was like five hundred and ten, but we always asked for three hundred. You have to, whatever you ask for, you have to spend, you have to buy seventy percent of it, so when we take that three hundred figure, we have to buy at least two hundred and ten. The price is guaranteed up to a hundred and twenty percent, so the three hundred, what do we, uh, the, three hundred and six to three hundred and seventy, no, three hundred and sixty, right? I can't even think right now, three hundred and sixty ton, which is basically an extra load, load and a half, two loads, that you get at the, the price that they quote, but then there's different tiers, you know, pricing, it goes up a little bit each time, um, quite a bit sometimes, um, then you're, you're guaranteed, you're guaranteed a lot, I mean, you're guaranteed salt deliveries up to like a hundred and fifty percent of what you asked for, so we get up to four hundred and fifty, after that, they can say, hey, sorry, we're out, um, and again, those couple of years, we had to buy four hundred and, you know, five hundred ton, two years in a row, and if we only guaranteed up to four hundred and fifty, we're gonna be a little short, and put it in perspective, I think that, you know, the town will get deliveries of salt, which is our total year's allocation, you know, they'll call up and say, hey, bring us, you know, four, four loads of it, and that's, you know, what we use. Xerox, I remember talking to Xerox years ago, they used twenty one, at that time, they were using twenty one hundred ton of salt every year, we used, averaged about three hundred. It's gone up a little bit more, um, but it's always been about three hundred, um, before we started doing this, so in recent years, we've asked for, we started looking at this, this was clients dealing, so I give them credit, this is approached, and it's, that supported a hundred percent, look at what we average use, make that our seventy percent, cause then it frees us up for more on this other side, and if we've got room in our bins, we can stock our bins full at the end of the year, because it's not gonna be any cheaper next year, it's not gonna get stale, it's not going bad, so we can stack our, stack our bins full, and ideally, start with full bins, cause at least then, it's a couple, you know, two fifty, three hundred, three dollars a ton cheaper than it was, um, you know, this year, then it's gonna be next year, so, so yes, it does include, um, additional, it's not stocked enough this year, um, this year, we're gonna have to, you know, do some transfers, at the end, I think we're already, um, I don't know, like fifty two dollars under and, or over, or something like that, that included all of them.
Okay.
Um, but we've got extra, um, extra to move over there, because, and we're, we're only in February.
Okay.
So.
Planters?
Yeah.
Yeah, the planters.
Planters, what are they, in there, six drainer?
Sixty-four hundred.
Sixty-four hundred, I don't even know where it is, but that's.
It is, uh, sixty-four, ten, two hundred.
Um, that's looking at getting, there was one additional planter that we had, um, that got run over, looking at replacing that one, we were.
And that thing that's pushed.
They got it pushed, yeah, um, we're also looking at on the island, um, that is a safety and a saving thing, getting those reservoirs in there to see if we can do those, so we're filling them up. Um, you know, they say you can fill those reservoirs once a week, there's difference, like, I say, yeah, it works, some people say it doesn't, basically wakes up from the bottom. So looking at retrofitting our old planters, putting those reservoirs in them, um, that you can, like, so bring the trailer down there, fill up those reservoirs, and then you don't have to have somebody on two fifty and one oh four every single day, watering those things, you go up there at the good time once a week, if you're filling it, you're done.
Find something fake.
Oh, I've asked Evan laugh dead a few times about that one.
No, that's for that every year.
I asked, yeah, I, I suggest that every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, people are just driving by.
I'm talking about on that, that island, only that island, I don't, I'm not talking about it through the sidewalk or the village street, but something that's a little bit safer for them to.
Well, I think once, if that's, if there's the reservoirs, I think we can figure that, in hindsight, when we were doing this project, we've, not in hindsight, I guess we did discuss a little bit, but it wouldn't have been a big pain with a hot box and a backflow preventer and all those things, we, we could've probably put some sort of a system in the middle where we could've had a hose or at least, I hope not had, had any parts, we could've, but we either had to dig across, have somewhere to have a meter and the,
Yeah.
all those temporary meters and all that stuff in the summertime, so it kinda would've been a pain, but, um, you know, we'd been need to have that, have that there, but it's such a short run, you know, if we can get the reservoirs in there, I think that'll help a lot, um, they really worked out good last year, they looked nice, uh, just, you know.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
People are just idiots on their phones when they're driving, and that makes you nervous having anybody, I mean, if we're not there on the road, we're out somewhere else on the road, it just makes you nervous when you, if you ever sit there and watch people driving by, it's incredible, incredible how many eyes you don't see.
Animal, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they look up every once in a while, and it's, uh, it's been, it was, people getting worse and worse about it.
Yes, they are.
But yeah, that's what that is, and that's replacement, there's three more, and the retrofitting the old one, I did talk to the bid yesterday, which isn't reflected in here, but I did talk to one of the bid guys yesterday, and he's, they were having a discussion, and we're gonna talk about it, I think at the bid meeting today, um, about possibly them getting, what?
You asked Megan, she went.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I went.
Okay, about getting the, uh, the planters, I don't know if they brought up the planters, um, this morning, that was gonna be a topic, or he's just gonna share the arrangement, it's gonna be one of the topics of discussion.
Some of the things that, yeah.
Bid brought, bought the original ones.
Yes, they did.
Oh, and that does have a, we're talking about a different, an additional one on that little sign near, uh, Orchard Street, correct? Orchard.
Yes, cause we went over some of the budgets this morning, we did.
What is other, here, not there, but, other.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Others are four seventy, and it's a lot of different things, I think I had an old time, which, which.
I don't think we should spend much time on something that has nothing.
Nothing on there.
It's in this year, and I'm just wondering.
I, I know what you're wondering, sir, but when Jake was starting to explain it, I'm like, we don't need this, there's nothing there.
Don't drink coffee next.
Well, it's in green, so I assume Jake.
What, what, what are the first four numbers, which other, cause four's, sixty-four?
Sixty-four, ten, four seventy, yeah.
Okay, cause they, yeah, it's four seventy.
Not some other ones there.
Oh, it's four grand.
Another one.
Yeah.
But that one I'm not asking, because I think it was this year.
So you, you currently approve four grand and the other, sir?
Yeah, I have a question, I, I think I had a question on that, what was included in this line?
Yeah. I'll see what has gone in there.
I know, I mean, they got approved.
Historically, nothing.
Right.
I don't know why four thousand was budgeted for this year.
Yeah, it wasn't created, I think, I couldn't look back, I think I asked for, I think I asked for more, but I think that then it was cut down to four thousand, which wasn't enough to get the planters, and freight's very expensive on those, because.
Those things in bins.
Yeah.
So we can just eliminate that, other, like, why is that even a budget line?
Because very oft.
No, you need a junk drawer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very often, we don't, there's things that'll pop up, it's one of our, you know, it's something'll pop up in parks, and there's nowhere to, to park it, there's nowhere to put it. You know, hey, we didn't, you know, we didn't have this budget before necessarily, or you had it in a different line, but it really doesn't fit there, so sometimes there's other lines, and each of the.
Emergency fund.
No, it's each of the sub-lines, maybe something that's not a reoccurring one, like, look at the street trees, it's, I remember the eighty-seven, eighty-one, seventy, or these, whatever that is.
Funny, you really know all the.
Shade trees.
I know, they moved them all out.
Shade trees are eighty-five, sixty.
Eighty-five, sixty.
They're down at the end.
I don't have my money for someone.
I don't have it on here either.
Yeah.
Is it on there?
No. I don't think so.
Where is it?
Very, um.
Eighty-five, sixty.
We lost it.
What? Uh-oh.
Missed a page, missing a page.
Burn it, all right.
See how you guys are trying to sneak us through, um.
Oh, God, help me.
This whole page.
Wonder how many others were on that page?
Secret page set.
Well, exactly, eighty-one, whatever it is, eighty-five, sixty, eighty-five, sixty, four hundred says other, and that's under street trees, that eighty-five, sixty, that signifies the street trees, four seventy's others. That one is, that's where we refer to E A B treatment.
No, that's eighty-five, sixty, forty-seven.
He's.
Four, four seventy, and that's ninety-one hundred dollars, that's the E A B treatment, now, we don't have that every year, and that's one question in a way that, I was out today, I don't know, haven't had this wrist done, so, um, one of the things, and I just finished this up yesterday, got it to Marcia, so we're trying to talk, um, so we haven't had a chance yet, but that's one of the questions I have, is how we wanna deal with that, we know that E A B treatment's gonna be approximately ten grand every two years. You put five grand a year in, but then we all, we'd always have to purposely rotate, I mean, that's what it is essentially, five grand a year. But if we do that, we know we're not gonna spend five grand, so we'd have to do a budget out of here, budget transfer or whatever, into the following year's budget, if we do five grand each year, or is it better to do just ten grand every other year, I, I like the five grand, but I don't know if it's a pain in the butt to do it that way.
Yeah, well, honestly, I don't either, sorry.
That's what we have to figure out, and, and figure out what the best way to do, to handle things like that.
Maybe you can add that to your feasibility meeting in regards to the, or the lease.
Yes, yeah, that's, the other, um, is, is things like that, cause we use these standard accounting things now, and I guarantee you, there's not a E A B treatment line, you know, it's not like four sixty eight's gonna be E A, E A B treatment, it's gonna be other, you know?
Yeah.
And that's more something.
Top fifteen minutes for someone on budget line. Ten grand. A contingency.
What?
Contingency, ten grand.
That's kind of the standard what we've had for years, I think.
And we spent a thousand two twenty-eight.
We spent more of it.
I like that. And we'll just park that.
Sorry, guys, I left off that whole last page there.
I don't know if they have any more super big concerns really.
I just was hoping for some more money on the Jazz Festival, I thought we were gonna last year put in a thousand, and I don't know what happened to that. Somebody said yes to me that that was going to happen, and then.
Who said yes to you?
I, that's what I couldn't remember.
Marcia?
Yeah?
Historian contractual, thirty-five, ten, four hundred.
Just tell, I don't care what your question.
Why are we up at thirty-one hundred from?
Because we, she's.
Five hundred, four hundred.
Yeah.
National.
She's, she's one of the ones that we're moving from payroll to a stipend.
Remember.
So they're not gonna be paid.
So we just.
They're on the bond, we're getting paid, so we gotta put it someplace.
We took her pay out of the line above that, the personnel line is now zero, but the net for historian is the same as before.
I got that first time.
He stores preservation. Who's the historical contractual?
That's the same thing that's been, we took her out of payroll, we're getting her stipend.
You know, so she's getting twenty-six, fifty-two, right, and then you're adding the other two, okay?
Yeah.
It's not a big deal, but I agree with Judy for this, come on.
The Jazz Festival, my gosh, we get four to five thousand people.
If you add there, if you add there, we lose candy, we gotta.
Too bad.
Take your bad.
Too bad, get rid of the candy.
I think we should add.
We're handing out carrots this year, it's good.
They're probably more expensive.
No, very seriously, because we did talk about it this, this morning, at the, the bid meeting.
You did.
Because of the number of, of people that we do that for the Jazz Festival, and, and he's trying to come up with.
So go to lease back down to five hundred.
What are you talking about, advertising or something?
No, 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 on what he wants to do for, uh, more, the lighting and stuff like that, no, no. He's got the bands already set up and everything, but it was more lighting and, and some things that they can do.
Yeah.
To bring more people.
I agree, it's such an important event for us.
Yes, it is, it's a big.
What part do you, I don't even know what that money goes for.
That's what I just asked, like, what is that five hundred even spent on?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what I was saying, his lighting, um.
Who's lighting?
He puts up extra stuff.
Ruin hour.
Jake?
Oh, is that, so this is, is that where we spent the Jazz Festival, so that's our, so that's our, I mean, that's enough for lighting, so if we increase the line, I don't, that's where we put up, we put it up the, we rented that tower last year, the center put lights and.
But other than that, we don't really put a lot of.
Well, he was looking at, he was looking at some more things that he wanted to advance, more things to do.
The people are the E A, they're the economic systems one hundred line, is the, is the people that are there, are, are plays that are there doing stuff.
That comes out of a different line.
But if there's different, you know, if there's something else, yeah, I mean, it is a huge, huge amount of.
That's what, that's what we were asking, yeah, if he says, gee, you know, if we could appreciate it all.
Yeah, move it up to a thousand, until we look at the, um, um, our budget, our revenue budget, and it's, uh.
Okay.
What's the zoning board contractual?
Um, that was the same thing she explained earlier, they're not getting a paycheck like you and I now.
They're giving this thing.
They're gonna get a start.
Personnel.
Yeah, the people that.
A contractual.
Yes, cause it's like they're dealing with a contractor, you're just paying, yeah, that's what the contractual is.
Storm sewer equipment, we went from first time seven thousand, fifteen thousand, this year, we haven't spent anything that I can see, and another fifteen thousand next year. I know you don't have it, but I'm asking, eighty-one, forty, two hundred.
Yeah, that's for gutter replacements and, and, uh, D I repairs, that are not part of a project, you know, we're doing all the gutters on Clover, on both sides, but there's other gutters throughout the village, we're gonna need work, or, or drain inlets that are gonna need work and rebuilding, um, but there's also a D I repairs, actually, no, that's just the gutters, cause there is a D I repairs line down further, so.
Jake, what's D I?
Drain inlets, catch basins, you know, those are part of our storm system, and we, you know, we have to rebuild those.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's, we've got, we're gonna spend those in the, spend those in the spring. Not all of it, normally, but.
So what's something, sir, I don't have this. Huh?
I'll come back and revisit it, hopefully.
Fine, we don't have what you have.
Jake's got fifteen thousand for storm sewer equipment, gutter replacements.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not equipment, it's, it's the gutters themselves, you know, putting gutters in, but since it was, there's typically more than, you know, more than five grand worth, is that something you capitalize, hopefully that it's gonna last more than five years, and I know before, Chris, we always, if it was more than a certain amount, it's gonna last more than five years, I mean, you try to put it, I don't know the difference really, and why we capitalize it, but it goes for a different, it's a counter for definitely, I guess, so.
That's still over time, it's depreciating, it's on accordingly.
It's, it doesn't make as much difference for us because.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, it's a benefit of the degree, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so one may have one.
Well, we have to, yeah.
You guys have the last.
Which one?
Thirty-five, sixty.
Now, we have no eighty-fives.
And the real ones.
For a bunch of purposes.
Yeah, salary increase.
I'm pretty sorry, I like that.
What's that?
Our, our salary increase, uh, says here ten percent on mine.
That's good, yeah.
Well, there's a zero left off there, it's really.
That was something that you guys are gonna have to pop on last night.
Ten percent comes out of mine.
Yeah, and it comes out of yours.
To give them now.
I was taking out the A L's.
Yeah, he's not here, take it out his.
No, well, no, well.
No, well, no, well, yeah.
Um, I don't know, I, I, I think you guys did a good job.
I, I agree, that would be very, very welcome.
So first, so good.
Yeah, first of a good draft, nothing, nothing that would be off for the jump zone.
Scaries, yeah, scary, thank you, yeah.
So, for next time, uh, any formatting, or like, do you wanna see the percent change from last year?
Yes.
That may help, and if you have a, if you potentially have the ability to send it to us electronically.
Obviously, that will include all the ones.
Yes. That's.
First, cause then I'll try to go through it a little bit, just so the speeds is up a little bit.
I'd like to see if you're always here.
It makes it, yes, it would make it a lot easier.
And then I'll try to look through it and, and have my questions.
Yes.
I think question.
I know, uh, easy, easy to read, color coded.
Yeah, it's good.
Sure.
I like the layout.
Very nice job.
I will say she has done an excellent job and is really.